Here.
Obedorf.
Here.
Echol.
Here.
Tinney.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular council meeting?
Second. All those in favor of approving the minutes for June the tenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Epstein.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four regular council meeting?
Motion.
I'd like to amend to contain special fire committee.
And finance.
And finance report.
And also add a presentation from our police chief right before council remarks.
Okay, we'll do, uh, fire will be B and finance will be C.
Are you making a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Yes.
Second. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Rosford Parks and Recreation Committee for six, ten, twenty-four. In attendance Toby Ladisma, myself, Brenna Reynolds, Dan Wilburn, Caroline Zukowski, Echol, and Terry McKnight. The meeting was called to order at five fifteen P. M. Capital Improvement Projects, Mr. Ladisma provided updates on several capital improvement projects, including new weight, pardon me, new weight and cardio equipment is ordered, delivery and installation happening soon. Zip track will be installed shortly. Swinging benches have been delivered by Vets Park, for Vets Park. Stone has ordered to finish the entryway to the rec center. Community Service Day. The Recreation Department is participating with Cedar Creek Church to do a cleanup at Vets Park on July twentieth as part of their regional wide community service day. They are expecting around thirty to fifty volunteers for this event. Upcoming programs, coach pitch and T-ball games have started and will run until early July. Summer day camp registration has started. Football and cheerleading registration is open and ends July the first. Softball is midway through their season with tournaments starting the last week of June. Community events. The board was updated on plans for River Fest on eight seventeen and the Halloween Parade on ten twenty-seven. Meeting was adjourned at five fifty P. M.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right, fire committee.
So the fire committee, as you all know, has met, um, about seven times over the last couple of months, um, and it was a good journey and I'm proud to be a part of it. We had so many, it was great to have so many different opinions and views and backgrounds on the committee so that, um, when we didn't know something, there's someone on the committee who either could answer us or could go find it. And, um, our goal was to be mindful and efficient. We decided early on that no matter what option was chosen, we would move forward, we would not move forward without twenty-four seven paramedic staffing. We set safety, quality, and satisfaction goals that we want to keep in mind as we develop a department. And our meetings were very respectful and productive, um, and so that was positive, too. So I want to make a recommendation to the council for a full-time standalone fire department to, and to then work with our neighbors to partner for joint response zones like automatic aid and to be the leaders for the development of a long-term, with a long-term goal of regionalization. So that is my, this is in no way a knock to the Parisburg Township Fire Department. They are a good department and we hope to be able to partner with them in the future. They expect quality as a partner, so we want to make sure that we can give them one. So my motion is to move forward with the full-time standalone fire department.
Kevin, does, will that come in the shape of an ordinance? Can you give us the chronology of?
So I think council needs to do now is presuming there's going to be a second, you vote on it now. Our revised, or our code chapter is chapter one thirty-nine of our code, um, and that calls for a volunteer fire department, so that's going to have to be redone. So the administration, what I would envision is the administration working with the three members of the committee to get the parameters of what this new, um, what this new department will look like. And then an ordinance will be presented to you to rescind chapter one thirty-nine as it now exists and then a new chapter one thirty-nine with what you guys decide this department will look like.
And can we get a civil service test going prior to passing that ordinance?
We're doing research at that, at the office. We're not sure how that interacts with the CBA. My, my thought is that we have to get a chief first. The chief, as Chief Kitzler will say, is the one that takes the lead in preparing the test. The test has to be prepared and it has to be approved by the Civil Service Commission. It then goes out and is advertised and Chief Kitzler, what do you estimate it takes for us to hire a new officer that's not a lateral?
Are you doing that when I'm checking?
I would hope so.
So in, um, the observance of the timeframe and wanting to get this up and going, I'd like to keep Andrew Vasek as part-time chief to oversee the process in the time being.
That's the mayor, your.
Yeah, um, of course.
We have anticipated this, so we have approved a, um, advertisement for a fire chief, which depending on what council does today, it'll go out either tomorrow or the next day. We're ready to hit the button.
I'm gonna go.
Yeah. So I don't know how long that will take depending on the procedure, but. So if there's a second to that motion, it's voted on it, then we'll start working as the administration to update the chapter one thirty-nine police, or to get the advertisement out for a fire chief. And then certainly, I said, I don't know if you, Andrew, if you've had any background in preparing tests for civil service?
Nope.
So, I mean, we can look at that, but, uh, somebody needs to prepare that test and get it to the Civil Service Commission for approval and everything.
Andrew, are you okay with preparing the test?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ultimately, there's other departments that have done this before, so borrowing shamelessly is, should be where we start.
And I don't know, Chief Kitzler, do they have the same thing as the, as the police? Do you know where you get, where it's the general test?
NTN has fired, yeah.
They would, okay.
But you have to, there's a process to do for what you want on the test and scores and stuff like that.
So can I have a second? Second. Thank you.
Vote, excuse me. Vote on the motion, I think, for the creation of a full-time department?
Yes.
Echol?
Aye.
Obedorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Right, finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rosford Finance and Insurance Committee met on May twenty-eighth. In attendance was Zachary Owen, Chris Heben, Chris Kirk, and Rachel Tinney. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. First item was the twenty-twenty-three audit. Finance Director Chris Kirk explained that the audit's nearing completion. Auditors were in the city for two and a half days pulling samples and have been requesting materials remotely. All statements had been filed as of five twenty-eight. Second item was the twenty-two-five estimated resources. Finance Director Kirk provided estimates for twenty-twenty-five versus past three years' revenue, including the first two months of twenty-twenty-four. Expected to have final estimates prepared for county in mid-July at what point the committee can review. Third item was income tax interest and penalty abatement. Finance Director Kirk presented two tax abatement situations and the process for how these came about and what could be done to conclude them. The committee agreed that in both cases, the abatement should be granted because the past two taxes had been paid and both were first-time incidents for the residents. Item four, twenty-twenty-four Q-one budget review. Finance Director Kirk explained that this was in process and would be an item that is reviewed at the next finance meeting. There were no public comments and the meeting adjourned at five thirty-five.
Okay, any comments or questions on the finance report? Okay, Allison, Board of the Mayor and Administrator.
Just very quickly, Mayor, we wanted to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed on Thursday, July fourth, in observance of the July fourth holiday and the rest of my time tonight. I'm gonna see to the police chief and he'll be doing a presentation at the end of all the legislation.
Okay. Mr. Watson, any correspondence?
I have two pieces of correspondence, Mayor. The first is a memo from Chief Kitzler to Officer Jody Johnson and Officer Wesley Sosie. Congratulations on completing another successful safety town for our children that are entering kindergarten. Your tireless efforts during the week-long program were evident at the graduation ceremony. The curriculum that you have developed over the past several years will surely get these forty-six children off to a safe start as they enter our school system. Your dedication to our mission and core values is greatly appreciated and does not go unnoticed. Keep up the outstanding work. The second is a memo from Chief Kitzler to Officer Keon Demansky and Officer Tyler Nagy. Subject was the twenty-twenty-four punt, pass, and kick USA. I would like to recognize both of you for your great work on the punt, pass, and kick USA competition that you held on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Your coordination and planning of this event led to a successful and fun day for all involved. This type of community outreach is a large part of our mission and it allows the youth of our community to stay active as well as have positive interactions with our police department. Keep up the great work.
All right.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash forty-five by title only?
So moved, second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-four dash forty-five is an ordinance amending supplemental number eleven, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, twenty-twenty-four, and ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, passed by ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash seventy-three. This is a first reading.
Allison, this is for the catch basins, correct?
This is a supplemental for two things that were initially included in the budget. This is more money for catch basins and for some bird deterrent flags down at the marina.
All right.
Move suspension of the second and third readings.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash forty-five. Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obedorf?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read resolution twenty-twenty-four dash eleven by title only?
So moved, second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-four dash eleven is a resolution pursuant to revise code section fifty-seven oh five point oh three B, requesting the county auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city of Rosford and the amount of revenue generated by the millage and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison?
These are, this is the renewal for the levy for the rec center. It's a one mil for operations and one mil for personnel. It is a renewal, so there's language in there that needs to be amended from the, it says new, it needs to say renewal, so it needs to be passed as amended.
Motion to amend resolution twenty-twenty-four dash eleven to state renewal.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to amend ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash eleven by replacing the word new with renewal, Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obedorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
This, this should pass today and go as an emergency because the levy is, levy language is due the first week in August.
Motion to suspend with the second and third readings.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare resolution twenty-twenty-four dash eleven an emergency?
Second. All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-four dash eleven. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obedorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twelve by title only?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-four dash twelve is a resolution pursuant to revise code section fifty-seven oh five point oh three B, requesting the county auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city of Rosford and other financial information and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison?
This is the renewal for the fire levies that are currently on. They'll be the exact same. If you amend the language to renewal, there'll be a two point eight for capital and a one point, or I'm sorry, a one mil for personnel. It just needs to say renewal.
Motion to amend resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twelve to state renewal instead of new?
Second. Vote on the motion to change, to amend ordinance of resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twelve to change the word new to renewal. Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Obedorf?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Move to suspend with the second and third readings.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us? But, go ahead, Bob.
Hi, Bob Bensick, one oh seven Birch Drive. A question for Mr. Heben. It does say up there a volunteer with the motion just passed today. Obviously, we're still a volunteer department until that's corrected, but does that have to say volunteer within this one or can that be amended or do we have to reintroduce this one if the department's finally changed to full-time?
No, we wouldn't have to. The levy would stay.
Just making sure it's good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare an emergency?
Second. All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twelve. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Obedorf?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Okay, Chief Kitzler.
So we've been doing this pretty much, what, the past four or five hours, moving the speed stats on Jennings. So I finally got it to go both ways, both incoming and outgoing. The only issue that we had last time is after I got more familiar with the software, these speeds are shown for average speed of every vehicle. So if you can imagine coming down the road and you see the sign and it says forty, and then you start to slow down and you slow down thirty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-five, and you maintain thirty-five, that's going to register you as like a thirty-seven point five mile per hour speed. It's not going to record every speed as you change. So these are average, average speeds. So this was from June twelfth at midnight through June twenty-fourth at eight-thirty in the morning, which was this morning, and the incoming vehicles are shown. The sign is facing the river, so that would be vehicles that are coming from the park towards Eagle Point. And you can see ninety percent were under twenty-five miles per hour on an average. Roughly nine percent were between twenty-six and thirty. Less than one percent were thirty-one to thirty-five. Point one percent, which is three vehicles out of almost three thousand vehicles, were thirty-six to forty, and zero vehicles averaged forty-one to forty-five and nothing over forty-six. So that's the incoming vehicles. The outgoing, pretty much the same stats. There's, uh, let's see, thirty-two, thirty-five, like thirty-six hundred vehicles, eighty-eight percent on the low end, uh, ten percent, twenty-six to thirty, and one percent, thirty-one to thirty-five, and five vehicles averaged between thirty-six and forty miles an hour. And actually, coming in, there were two vehicles that averaged forty-one out of forty-five, but two vehicles out of almost thirty-eight hundred vehicles, it, it doesn't seem like a problem to me. So that's just my opinion as, uh, as a police chief.
Okay.
The second thing was, I've mentioned, uh, when other people have brought our UAS up, um, we're completely transparent with these drone flights. This file is available for every flight that we do. You can request it as a public record. It shows, uh, the exact altitude, uh, and path of the drone flight, and it even shows where the camera's pointing. If you look at the, the bottom toolbar there, the second one in from the left, shows the camera angles. The altitude is over on the right, the speed is just to the left of the altitude on the right. The whole telemetry of the drone is shown there and, um, it's available, that's a public record to anyone that would request it. The only exception would be is if it was an active investigation and then we would have to wait until the investigation was over, so. But you can't really get any more transparent than that.
Great work.
Thank you.
Very neat, Chief, yeah.
Okay, council remarks. Mr. Toth?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I've got an email I'd like to share that was, I believe, was sent out to all of the, all of us. Dear Rosford elected officials, I wanted to share with you my personal experience with the Rosford Fire Department. On Sunday, May twenty-fifth this year, my son fainted during Sunday Mass at All Saints Church. It was noticed by an off-duty member of Rosford Fire Department. Sorry, I did not get his name. As we were walking my son out of church in order to get him some water, the man radioed for an ambulance. Within minutes, the ambulance arrived with three members of the department as well as another off-duty member. They quickly assessed my son's condition in a professional and caring manner. After it was determined my son would not need to be transported, they dis-
Because we really like the idea of partnering with Parisburg Township for automatic aid, covering crossroads and, uh, river road, but of course, we have to prove ourselves as a department before we can do that, and, uh, so that's step one, but they seem receptive to that idea and, uh, so I just want to make that point. This is in no way a knock to them. Number two is that we are only going to have basic coverage. No, no, no. The plan is to have a paramedic on staff twenty-four seven, and then when we eventually have our officers in place, we're going to require them to be paramedics, too, so that will be at least two paramedics. So two paramedics at all time. That was a big concern about the committee to make sure that there are paramedics at all times. And the assistant chiefs, uh, Parisburg Township Assistant Chief said that, um, this is the same model that they use, so, um, that was a good choice. Another issue was the committee just wants to keep the firefighters' jobs, and while we want to protect jobs, there's no people attached to those jobs. Everyone understands that there's going to be a civil service test and perhaps lateral hires, and Mike Bell came to several meetings, and I forgot to thank him earlier, for his, um, knowledge that he, he, uh, shared at times when we had questions, but he, he outlined with the committee how the civil service process works. And so everyone, everyone from the department who was there at least recognizes that there's a process and they're not just walking into positions that they have to test and paramedics are preferred, and if they're coming in not as a paramedic, that they, uh, work towards a paramedic. And that's something we hope to offer an assistance on. Another issue that we heard is the work pool is limited and no one will come and work here. And in the last couple of years, with this station as it was, I, I can see that. It was a bad situation and not desirable. But it once was and it will be again. You know, there's the saying, if you build it, they will come. The A, B, C, D shift is going to be attractive to workers. Having forty-eight on and seventy-two off helps with, um, mental health and just self-care. Tuition assistance towards being a paramedic will be tempting. Being a part of establishing a department from the ground up will be as well. Rosford schools will be tempting, their facilities will be tempting, development and success in the crossroads will be. Rosford's a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and great things are happening here, so I have confidence that people will want to be a part of us, plus the overwhelming support of the community and city council for this department. The key to this is making sure that the administration's on board and we all work together as a team. And I think that, that's a must in making sure that this plan, um, goes forward. We don't want to fail. This is people's safeties at hand, so we all need to work together towards success. I've often said the hardest part of being on council is working with people who are all about explaining why something can't happen instead of finding a way to make it happen. Quite honestly, there's no room for people like that. We've got to be all in. And finally, I heard some people, sometimes being a leader means making hard decisions. And that came a lot from a lot of different avenues. And nothing about this decision was easy. It was not easy on anyone. Everyone worked hard on it, and they put a lot of thought, commitment, and integrity into every step of the process. So, and I think that's what being a leader is. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tenny.
I also have a statement. I did put a statement out on Facebook. I understand that, if you need to know. But I wanted to just offer a little more slightly personal take on what I feel happened with the committee. First, I want to thank Brianna Reynolds, Councilwoman Brenna- Brenna Reynolds, sorry Brenna, for having the vision and the courage to bring this committee to fruition. Your vision has, your vision to have a transparent and interactive process was just what this issue needed. Thank you again for doing that. I also want to thank Chris Kirk again for the invaluable information. Kevin Heben for helping us with legal problems or questions. I'd like to thank all the committee members. Can come together to unanimously solve a problem that is this very detailed. It's very humbling. It is a perfect example of how I feel government should work. On the other hand, I am disappointed by the way some people in this administration have reacted to this committee. The lack of transparency, the lack of communication, the lack of support, and the sabotage of the work this committee was sent to do is disheartening and disappointing. At the very least, I would have expected respect. But to be honest, some people felt short of that one basic thing also. I expected more. I don't know. Maybe I was naive to expect all those things would be provided to us. But if this is how it goes, when we don't agree on something, then we have a larger problem at hand. We don't always have to agree, but at the very least, you can talk and be respectful of each other's positions. I truly believe the type of government we want starts here at the grassroots level. We need to be examples of good government, one that listens, learns, and moves forward. If this committee has done nothing else, I hope it shows everyone that when you are transparent and honest through a process, it benefits everyone, but mostly our citizens. I am proud to do the work on the committee. I was proud to vote yes on this plan. I think we did a long, hard battle for it, and I hope that we have support from everybody from this point out. Thank you.
Mr. Owens.
Couple of things. First, thank you to Officer Jody Johnson and Officer Sosie for an excellent Safety Town program. Chief Kitzler, it's every year. I know that our kids get safer with that. My son was in the program this year, and he had a story to tell every single day he came home and had a great time with the forty-six other kids that were there. So, appreciate that. Also, want to say thank you to Mr. Oberdorff, Terry McKnight, and Tiffany Densick for attending the ceremony. It does make a difference to those kids when they see people like us there. So, appreciate that. My second thing is, now that we've made some decisions, now that we've gone through this process, I encourage everybody to stop playing old tape. We are moving forward. We've made decisions to make us better. Choosing to talk about things that happened twenty-five years ago is not going to help us. Secondly, all the figures, all the things that we did were done with integrity, in my opinion. So, this idea that we had fake numbers or false figures that weren't real, I personally saw almost every single thing that was done. And so, I can vouch for decisions. Whether they were presented too early or not is one thing, but everything had some validity to it. We've now made a decision. We're moving forward. I encourage everybody else to follow suit.
Mr. Heben.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Reynolds.
Before I read what I wrote, I just want to say that I am truly blown away by the passion and the integrity that I've seen since the beginning of this committee. I always knew it was in good hands, and I really believe that everyone on that committee was looking for the best idea, not just their idea. I want to extend my sincere thanks to the committee members for their thoughtful review of each plan and their deliberation in charting a path forward. I also want to thank the community members for their input, engagement, and trust in the council to make the most responsible decisions for our city. The results we're presenting are a testament to our commitment to collaboration, transparency, and tangible deliverables that will protect our community for decades to come. Building bridges is more challenging than burning them, which is why transparency and collaboration should always guide us in our roles, and why I'm so grateful for those who participated in this process to create that for our community. Thank you.
Okay, audience remarks.
Andrew Vasek, 1124 Lewis Street, Rossford. Clarification on Councilman Toth's letter from the family member. It wouldn't be without Chief Kitzler's quick action. He was the one that- Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening. Greg Marquette, 1238 Grassley Court, Rossford, Ohio. I want to commend you all on your hard work, what you put into this effort. I have three questions. When can we expect a full-time fire department? How much do we save through your studies over Perrysburg Township's proposal? How much are we saving? And what was my third question? I forgot the third part.
It's all right. Every other Monday.
I'll think of it. But anyways, on a side note, there's two or three projects that I know firsthand that City Council approved of last year. One was a splash pad out here. One was doing some work up by Red's Bar up there. It's going to be a whole community thing that we put a lot of time and money and effort into. And also, the ditches, the state is building, or actually, the federal government is building a bike path across seventy-five for us. What are we doing to prepare to access that bike path? I know that that stuff was discussed last year, and money was put aside for those ditches to be filled on Lime City as well as Glenwood. Take some answers from anybody if they want to give them to me.
So, the splash pad out here, Facilities Committee voted no on that, so that's not going to hap-
Wait, wait, wait. So, it was approved seven to nothing last year by a council last year, and now this year you guys say no to it?
Yes. We're not facing the same circumstances right now that we were-
So, that's the way the liberal thing rolls nowadays around here. Okay.
We also-
What about down at Red's? Is that going to be canceled too?
First of all, that's never been brought to the Facilities Committee as far as I've been on it. I'm still speaking.
I am too. I got the microphone right here.
There has been a splash pad planned behind the rec center for as long as I've been on the recreation-
It's been talked about, never been planned.
Absolutely. I was shown pictures of the structures that would be put in.
Talked about, never been planned.
Yeah, and that's what you do in committees, is talk. So, that plan was voted down by everyone on the Facilities Committee because of the issue that we were facing with the fire department. We could not in good conscience approve that project while we were facing the issue that we're facing. So, that was the decision that we made.
Okay, so you guys can't handle more than one thing at one time? Is that what you're saying?
That's not what I said.
That's what you're implying.
You're misreading the information that I'm giving you.
Okay, well, then explain it to me better.
I just explained it. If you can comprehend what I just explained-
I don't comprehend. I don't comprehend how a council last year approved seven to nothing to do something, then you guys come in here, and because you can't solve the fire department issue, you put everything on back burners, and we win.
And that was, that decision was also made because of how much feedback we got from the community about what would happen.
On Facebook? Do you get that information on Facebook?
People also call and talk to us in person.
Okay.
So, no.
Okay. It appears that way. And also, the other thing, the other thing that is very disappointing is the way this thing has gotten so ugly. I mean, it makes it look like we hate the Rossford Fire Department. These guys, they're our neighbors. Nobody up here, I know the mayor, I know Allison, nobody hates these people. Everybody loves these people. We're looking for what's best for the community. And when I see comments like, "I don't want somebody showing up to save my life with a Perrysburg Township shirt on." Come on, give me a break. So, I want to see the results of your studies. You guys formed a special committee. We have a safety committee that's been around since Rossford's been-
And somehow didn't establish as much as this-
I'm talking, now I'm talking. I got the mic, I'm talking.
My God. Are you, Mayor, really?
I'm sorry?
Just address us.
Yeah, so I want to know.
Off the top of my head, personnel cost savings is eight hundred thousand dollars. That does not include costs of capital improvements or capital because we were not given that information on the Perrysburg Township plan. We currently budget about half a million dollars for capital costs, I believe. And so, we were just going with that's what it would cost across the board. However, if you looked at their presentation that they gave, it was higher than five hundred thousand dollars for capital costs.
Okay, so this decision is being made off of no firm figures? Is that what you're telling me?
As firm as we could get.
Oh, my God. Are you serious? You're talking about millions of dollars for a fire department? And you don't have the exact numbers? You don't know what you're talking?
We're given.
I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Michael.
Hey, Mike.
Hi, guys. Mike Lord, 615 Glenwood. I just wanted to come up here and thank the council, the community, and the city for allowing me to be a part of the special committee. It was an honor. It was a lot of work. I've never been a part of anything like that before, so it was definitely new for me. But again, I just wanted to come up here and just thank everybody for allowing me to be a part of that.
All right.
You so much.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, Bob Densick, 107 Birch Drive. Echo the comments. Fantastic job by the committee. Brenna, you brought the idea forward. You weren't participating, but I know you were behind on everyone, and it showed. So, Caroline, I know how hard you have worked on this for a long, long time. God bless you for leading this through. Rachel, Zach, all the committee members, thank you all very much. Next task going forward then. So, we've got a direction from the committee. We've got a direction from council. Let's start working on the facilities end of it. And that starts with Public Works, I believe is what the discussion was. I'm not sure if there's an action item that has to occur off of that. Get into Public's Works, get Tyler some new space, so we have space here to rework so these firefighters, when we have full-time firefighters, have facilities to work within. So, that's a Facilities Committee initiative. Then, Finance Committee, the money's there. We can see that from the CAFRES. Let's work within that to put the priorities in place and use the money that we have. Thank you all. Great job.
One more, two minutes.
And the reason I'm being like this is because I'm as passionate about this as you guys are. It was an issue when it was, I was on that, sitting in that seat last year, and it's still an issue to this day. How many people does it take to fill a fire department out there in the crossroads? Because right now, if we go ourselves, we don't have anybody out there to cover physically more area than our city is here on the side of the tracks. So, how are we going to amend that?
So, we're going to establish a full-time fire department and hopefully do automatic aid agreements similar, with Perrysburg Township, similar to what they're doing with Perrysburg, where they cover portions of our calls and we cover portions of their calls. We're not going to limit that to only Perrysburg Township. Any community that's neighboring us will be invited to join in that kind of partnership. That's the start towards regionalism. There are several regions or groups like this throughout the state that aren't quite districts because they're all still autonomous. So, they all still have their own chief, and they all still have their own funding. But they work together on shoring up the geography and who's covering what. They purchase specialized equipment together. They do trainings together. There's one in the Dayton area that they actually go together. The partners all go together and have a regional training center. That it's actually a building, and they work together on that. And then, they hold classes to train fire departments there. So, I mean, the possibilities are endless. And by choosing to go full-time, have a full-time department here does not mean in any way, shape, or form that we're not ready, we're not going to partner with Perrysburg Township. So, that option of going, of doing that on the south side of town is still in talks.
Okay, so if we went with Perrysburg Township, how soon could we be a full-time fire department in the city of Rossford, covering there and here?
They need to hire twelve people, just like we would.
How quickly could that be done?
Just the same amount of time as we would.
No, not to say, because you got to-
Their estimations in their proposal was six months.
Six months with the township?
With the township.
And if we do it our own, what's our timeframe?
Ours was in the same range, six to twelve months.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Oh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?